I only had to call them all to. They got good, they got Sheila. I don't even have to call it to order, they just go and order. Alright. Good morning, everyone. If we go down and call a meeting to order, if you will, we ask that you put your phones on vibrate or turn them off. And we're going to ask our emergency management director, Mr. Jones, to leave us in the prayer. And go ask Mr. Will Sly, leave us in the pledge.
Let us pray. Oh gracious Father God, we come to you this morning telling you thank you, Lord. Thank you for waking us this morning. Thank you for giving us traveling grace. Lord ask you to all the decisions that be made in this meeting this morning, Lord. Touch the supervisor that are making them and let them be done in your name. These prayers we pray in your darling son Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Attention, salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God and indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Alright. Alright, I transfer clerk.
Mr. President, you said every supervisor should have in front of them the August the first board minutes. I would ask that there are no changes. The board please approve said minutes.
Move. Got a motion by card, the second. Second by Sheila. In the discussion, not all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Thank you, Mr. President.
Motion carry. Alright, now we'll go to our concerned citizen. We have on here Ms. Johnson and Ms. Banks from Canton Public School. Alright, which one of you tell the board?
Good morning, I'm Victoria Johnson. I'm the executive director of secondary schools for Canton Public School District. I'm here representing Dr. Pamela Self, who is principal of Canton High School. She is requesting the use of two voting machines. The purpose of using the voting machines, we hope will enhance our students' understanding of the election process. It is our goal that by using the voting machines, students will have an opportunity to simulate the real voting experience and understand the importance of exercising their right to vote. So we're asking that you allow us to use these two voting machines this week as we enhance our students' instruction.
Alright, Ms. Johnson, you talking about this week, how soon do you need?
I believe Dr. Self requested it for tomorrow and Wednesday, if I'm not mistaken.
Okay. I'll move. Got a motion by card, I second it. In the other discussion?
Yeah, Mr. President, I just have just a couple of questions. I think it's very good that students learn the system of voting. So I, you know, I'm definitely in favor of this. Just want to, I see Anita's here as far as who's responsible as far as moving, setting up, and just the responsibility of protection of those machines. Who would, who would be doing that for? For this group, for the school?
Yes, sir, I'm aware of that and we have been in discussion with them about that. And E S and S and I will be in conjunction with helping to move those machines.
Okay, so you'll be supervising?
Yes, sir.
So to speak, okay.
Yes, sir.
Mr. President, thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carry. Alright, thank you. Alright, got any other concerned citizen?
There are two on the list here. The first would be Johnny McDonald, concerned with large truck parking on McDonald Road.
Johnny McDonald, come right up to the mic and...
Mr. President, while he's making his way, I would ask Tim to be close by as well because what he's going to be talking about, Tim will have some input.
Good morning, my name is Johnny McDonald, the president of North Livingston Place Neighborhood Association. Also a retired fireman with the city of Jackson, fire inspector with the city of Jackson for 28 years. But my concerns today is dealing with McDonald Road. We have four to five large trucks with 20-foot beds that's parking at 112 McDonald Road. And it's a nuisance and safety concerns and then too, the road is not designed for that purpose. I'm here to try to get some, any kind of action or get a road limit, get a gross limit or find out what the gross limit for that road is. Because to me, the road is beginning to deteriorate and not only that road, but the road that they are traveling to get there. And we worked with Mr. Steen to get that road paved. And he said he wouldn't pave it until we get all the dump trucks off. We got them off. Now we got five 18, four to five 18-wheelers and they are hauling everything. And I do have some pictures that I took yesterday that there was parked there, if you would like to see these pictures. And I have contacted chef department, I contact zoning, I contact M D O T supervisor, road manager, chef, city of Madison. And it's been going on for about six months and it's not getting any better. We got four, we got five to six residents that's within 75 yards, 75 yards that resides at their primary residence that these trucks are affecting. And then when they're traveling up and down the road, they're affecting the whole neighborhood. We got 13 homes on McDonald Road. And when that turns out to go, turn out on McDonald Road to go on to Livingston Road, that's a great concern because they just, the turn is not designed for it and the road ain't designed for it. So I'm here representing the neighborhood, our neighborhood association. They approved me to come and represent them to see can we get this situation addressed with putting up some road limit. Because I think personally, they shouldn't be allowed to park in a residential area. We're not rural, but we're residential. We're not a platted subdivision. I know you got something for platted subdivisions. They're not allowed to park in platted subdivisions, but, but we're pretty close to that. And I know the, on the heavy hauling permit, it states that the road manager can come out and issue, issued restrictions for any truck that's over the limit, require posting a sign. So that's what I'm trying to get today. See can we get a sign, a road limit sign like what they got on Rocket Hill Road. They got a 10,000 pound limit over there.
Mr. President, I'm well familiar with this and speak on behalf of this. I know Mr. McDonald and I have been fighting this fight for five or six years and we've made a lot of progress and the road has been repaved and one group of dump trucks has been removed four, five, three, four years ago and now it sounds like it's another set of trucks that's coming in on that road. And for those that may not know where McDonald Road is, it is between Highway 463 and on North Livingston Road, right south of 463 and between there and Woodman of the World Place. And I think it's a church there now. But anyway, it's just right off 463 and I would ask Tim to come up because I know Tim and Scott and Corneta's. I've been working on this thing for a while. So Tim, if you would, come up and maybe answer some of the questions and where we are and how we're going to get to where we need to be.
I guess this came up about six months ago or so and at that time, we did have the road department to go out and put up signs. And Cornet gets confirmed with his signs superintendent that there are signs up there. I have not seen them, but I've been confirmed that they are. At that time, I was not aware that it is a large problem with multiple trucks sitting on the side of the road. I was under the impression that it was one truck that he was taking his vehicle home in the evenings and parking there. So with it being multiple trucks, Scott and I may be able to work together and see if we can come up with a, you know, a resolution that this is residential area and not a place to park multiple 18-wheelers.
Did you see the pictures?
I have not seen the pictures.
Okay, take a look at the pictures and because I think that's what Mr. McDonald's is looking at is the size of the vehicle on that road and the road may not be, may not can handle that
Right.
heavy load.
Right.
And so, and I know this has been going on for a while. It's a separate, it's just a separate set of trucks that has come on within the last six months.
Okay, well, we'll definitely take a, I'll ride out there this evening. They're in the evenings, correct?
Through the week is, they're far, they're in and out. So there may be one truck there during the day, but most of it comes in.
In the evenings?
In the evenings.
Okay, yeah, I'll run out there in the evenings.
And so the signs are up and y'all going to look at the trucks then?
I haven't seen any signs.
Okay, I will verify the signs as well.
Verify the signs if you would today, tomorrow and let's see if we can take care of this issue and move forward.
Okay, will do.
Tim, a couple, couple things there. When, and sir, you might be able to answer it better than Tim. When you get to looking at these trucks, make sure the driver of those trucks that don't live in that area. Because if they live in that area, I wouldn't want to be keeping them from bringing their truck closest they can to their home and parking it there. Not bringing it to grandma's house.
Right, be the primary residence for this person.
Yes, because this is going directly affect my whole district. When you get to talking about 18-wheelers not being able to bring it to where they live. So do you know, do those guys that drive those trucks live in that area?
Yes, it's one driver for that home, that resident. And the rest of them, from my understanding, is friends and associates that live in different places.
Alright.
And some in Madison, some in Jackson.
Well, we might be able to deal with that then. He might be able to bring one truck in there, the one that drives it.
But one thing that I want to make clear.
Go ahead.
One thing that, I don't disagree with Supervisor Griffin, but one thing that I want to make clear on that road, we just paved that road. And if there's an 80,000 pound truck coming through and that road load, road limit is 40 or 50,000, I don't want that 18-wheeler on there. Whether that fellow lives there or not.
Right.
You know, because all he's going to do is tear that road up.
Well, Mike, you better get involved in that then because we finna get into a legal battle.
You know, because we can't let one come down that road and say it's okay and then not, and stop three others.
Right.
And not say it's okay and all of them are the same on the, you know, on the loads. So we just, we just need to treat everybody the same.
Agreed.
And you might consider looking to sign a note through trucks.
Right.
A note trucks, 18-wheeler parking in there.
Okay, I need to get a little more information about the whole situation before.
Yeah, yeah, it might give you way of working with Tim on that.
And there's, what I was going to say is, I can go, is two of these trucks in this picture have the same logo on the side of them. So it's a company somewhere that's, that these trucks belong to.
Yeah.
That's what it was at the very beginning, about five years ago. There was a lot of dump trucks on the very dead end of that road that people didn't even live there. They just found a place to park and they'd come there every morning and get the truck and park it in the afternoon and the county, you know, took care of that issue. So we may find the same thing here.
Okay.
Well, alright.
Alright.
Thank you. Who are their next concerned?
Next up would be Ms. Tanya Johnson with the library system.
Library, alright, Ms. Johnson.
Good morning. I am here in regards to the library contract. I think we spoke briefly about that the last time that I was here. We've been trying to come to an agreement with the city of Ridgeland on, on the library contract. And I think last time I was here, we talked about, we were at a bit of an impasse on trying to get everyone to sign on to either the 2009 or the proposed 2022. And so since then, we have, our, the library board has decided to offer standalone contracts to each of the entities in an effort to get everyone to sign on. We have all of those contracts on agendas for the various cities this week. We received an email late Friday that the city of Ridgeland wants some type of approval or acknowledgement from the county that the county has reviewed the contract, is on board with the standalone contract concept and before they will move forward. So it is on their agenda for tomorrow night. We would like them to consider the standalone contract. We feel like we have confirmation from the other entities that they are going to consider and approve that. As the contracts are identical to the existing contract, they're just done individually instead of as a group. So we're really here asking for some type of motion or I guess acknowledgement that the county has reviewed the contract, the proposed standalone contract, that y'all are not opposed to the concept of a standalone contract and that it's okay for the cities to move forward with that.
Mr. President, I would, I would say something that at the very beginning, I know I did have a call from the city of Ridgeland Friday afternoon asking about individual contracts, which I was not familiar with at the time. And I, you know, and I made the statement to the city of Ridgeland to say, I would, I would see what the board of supervisors is going to do before I would act on anything else because I think four, five months ago, you know, everybody, we thought everybody was going to sign a 2022 contract. And it ended up no one signing but the county, city of Canton and city of Ridgeland.
Right.
And so that didn't work out. And so I think that's what they are waiting for, some direction
Yes.
from this board at this point, as you indicated.
Yes, and I had, before sending out the, before my board actually voted on doing the standalone contracts, we had actually contacted the entities, including, we talked to Supervisor Griffin, we talked to county administrator to make sure that, you know, they were not opposed to the idea of a standalone contract. And so we received indications from all entities that this would be a workable, fair compromise for everybody that everybody would, would consider. And that's why we voted to go forward with that.
And the city of Ridgeland agreed to that as well?
From, I think our understanding is, you know, their attorneys have said the same thing that they've said along, that they would, they would consider that. They would put that towards the board of aldermen and let them decide.
Mr. President, I would, I would ask the board to consider working with Mr. Espy and Mr. Sanders, which is the library attorney, to look at the agreement and, and bring something back within the next two weeks for this board to look at moving forward with.
Is that a motion or you just?
Sir?
Was that a motion or you're kind of directing them or what?
Well, I'm just, I'm just really just saying, that's, that's kind of my thoughts because what I understand.
Well, and I just want to clarify that, you know, y'all are going to take it under consideration and would put it on your agenda for, you know, your first meeting in September. But in the meantime, if it's on the agenda for all of the cities this week, you're not opposed with them moving forward and signing on to it, which would make it easier for y'all to then approve it come September. I don't want it to be taken misconstrued as, no, the cities need to wait until the, until the county does something because we're in a, in a position where we're not receiving funding from one of the entities because of this. And we need to get that moving forward and we also are about approaching a new budget year and we can't go into a new budget year without a commitment of funding.
My understanding is y'all have talked with each city and town and they're okay with a single contract?
Yes.
They're okay considering a single contract? Maybe that's the way, best way of putting it?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
And that's really now with that.
I am too.
Yeah, I am as well. If the cities are, you know, that's fine.
Yes, and in the past, like with the 2009 contract, you know, they weren't all signed at the same time. In fact, the county kind of signed in the middle of, after two other cities, before two others. And the board of trustees was the last to sign on. So there's no requirement that any one entity be the first or the last to sign.
I would make a motion then for the library attorney, Mr. Bob Sanders, and our attorney, Mike Espy, to come to work together on an agreement to bring back to us to, to do exactly what we want to do as far as the single contracts. But to make sure that everything is legal on our end with our attorney. So I would put that in a motion.
Got a motion by Gerald, the second. Second by card, in other discussion.
So are we going to approach the different entities?
It's okay for them to move forward at their meetings this, this week as well?
Right. Yeah, because we going to approve a standalone contract
Okay.
at our next board meeting, after these two lawyers work together.
And so I can, I can let the, all the entities know that, that the county is on board with that and as long as they will approve those contracts this week, we'll move forward.
And I'm making that motion, I'm making that motion with the understanding that y'all have talked with each city.
Yes, we have.
They have agreed that they would consider doing this.
Yes.
Okay, that's really not making this motion.
Yes, that's, that's my understanding, yes.
And before I let the lawyer talk, if the cities is not willing to work with y'all and give you all contracts, we expect you all board to take the steps of doing whatever it takes for that city to be able to fund the rest of the cities and the county.
Yes, sir.
Whether it take that city out of the library system or what? If they not willing to give a contract, they don't want a library.
Yes, sir, we've had that discussion and we've, we've had a discussion about how we could move forward and we've, we've discussed that with like the state library commission and, and what our, our obligations are and what city obligations and, you know, funding authorities' obligations are.
Lawyer. Before we carry the motion.
Okay.
Alright, I don't have to say much about it, but I've written an email about it. I read all the contracts and the county is okay to proceed under the 2009 contract. The county is good to proceed under the 2022 contract, which was already signed. And the county is okay to proceed under the standalone contract principle. Here's the issue. The statute calls for a county-city system and the system involves the county, but it also involves Ridgeland, Madison, Canton, Flora Camden. And if any one of the participants in the system doesn't sign, you don't have a system, right? So that's why we, we didn't want to be first. I understand about everybody signing 2000 contract in different times, but that was, that was, that was long ago. And there was no issue of a county not signing, not being willing to sign. Here you do because they haven't done it. Ridgeland had made a agree with Madison, Madison had made a agree with Ridgeland and they didn't sign. So we didn't want to give our imprimatur to something that, that couldn't be enforceable because you don't have a system. That's why I recommended we wait till last. It's not that we're not going to do it. It's just that we know everybody else has done it and we can do it. So if the board, in line with Mr. Steen's motion, wants to indicate to the, to Ridgeland our intent to sign, then yes, we, we're still operating on 2009, we're still paying on 2009. All our responsibilities are the same, we're going to continue paying. You don't have an issue with the county. No, so I'm saying, why don't you, I'll get with the lawyer. But I mean, it's going to be the same. I recommend we wait until last because then we know we have a system.
Well, if that's, if that's the case, then, you know, motion's still there on the table for them to work together with. But then, once everyone signs, y'all bring it back to the board.
Yes.
And then we would, we would sign.
Yes, everyone is on schedule for a meeting this week. Flora is, everyone is actually tomorrow night, except for the town of Flora is Thursday night. And so once everyone has signed, I would let the county administrator know that he already has a copy of the contract and ask him to put it on, on the agenda for.
We would need to see the signed contract and enter.
Sure, I can, absolutely, I'll, yes, I'll provide copies of, of the signed contracts once, as soon as I have them.
Okay.
Alright, got a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carry.
He's getting counsel.
Alright.
Okay, do you want to?
Sure.
Mr. Chairman, ask me. I'm Bob Sanders, I'm the attorney for the Madison County Library System. I think I heard one of you just say that the county does not want to sign until all the cities have signed. If you adopt that position, you effectively give the city of Ridgeland a veto. That if it doesn't want to sign, then the county won't sign. And that's what we're trying to get away from by going to the standalone model. Is that no city will be in a position where it can have a veto over what the rest of the members of the, of the library system want to do. So I hope that was not part of the motion that the county will not sign until all the cities sign. Because if that, if that's the motion, I'm afraid we'll never get anything signed.
If I said anything about that, I was trying to repeat or trying to go on what Mr. Espy said. So I'm, I would leave that up to him, you know?
Well, I have a question because Mr. Espy did make a statement about the system. Because I don't think that one, if one city falling out breaks
Breaks system, yeah.
Because the city of Canton, city of Flora, city of Camden, well, the township of Camden and the city of Madison, if they all sign, we in fact have a system. Without the city of Ridgeland.
I appreciate that, but I respectfully disagree. Because in the 2009 contract, it talks about the participants in the system. And there's a clause that allows any one of them to opt out. And it's a process, you got to give notice, six-day notice, they have to meet and vote. And then if one opts out, they have to take the assets from that building and reach to your assets. Nobody's opted out. So, so, so until you opt out, you're still in. And if you are in and haven't signed, you don't have a system. So I'm not trying to give Ridgeland a veto, no. Any extraordinary power over everything, no. I'm just simply saying, you know, we have to work together to get the system in force. And if today she's asking, you move to give Ridgeland this certain knowledge that we intend to sign the standalone contract, then your motion is in order. I'm saying, but if everybody, but I'm trying to protect this county because we've had an issue before where we signed a 2022 contract, Mr. Griffin signed it. And another participant didn't sign it. And so we're, we're sort of in a lurch, you know?
So that was a veto right there then?
Yes, we did it. We did it unknowingly. So, I mean, I don't want to put this board in position again of being told something didn't happen. So I'm just, I'm just saying, we should wait. That's all I'm saying.
My question, Mr. Attorney, is that if everybody in the system signs and one entity does not sign, that entity from your explanation would be, would control the system. In other words, they got to opt for them to opt out. They can't be kicked out because they didn't sign.
If I, if I was, I can't speak for the board of attorney, but, but if, if somebody in our system would not pay and would not sign, then I think, I think, I think the system ought to meet and put them out.
Exactly.
Yeah, the library system could put them out. Yeah, yeah.
I think, I think y'all got a good, I mean, I think that you can work everything out, actually. I really do. I think you can work it out and work it through.
Let me make one point though. The city of Ridgeland never spread the 2009 contract on its minutes. And it takes a position, and I think it's correct, that therefore Ridgeland is not presently a part of the Madison County library system. That's, that's another reason to go to the standalone concept, that the people who want to be in sign, if somebody doesn't want to be in, fine, the system goes on without them. But the system can add cities, it can reduce cities. We may have Gluckstad on as another city before long.
There you go.
Who knows, but yes.
Go kick them out if they don't pay. Just that simple.
I will say that the city of Ridgeland wants to be into, in the library system.
I hope you're right, I hope you're right.
Oh yeah, I've talked with them here last Friday, actually, or before. And they, they want to be able to work this out and they do want to be in the system. I will say that.
We've given them a lot of opportunities to work things out and they haven't done it yet, but I hope you're right.
Yeah, I'm right on that part. I just hope that everybody can come together on an agreement.
So how much time are you going to give them?
To next board meeting.
Next board meeting, okay.
Well, they, they meet tomorrow night and we really need an answer from them. This has been going on since April. In fact, in April, they did affirm the 2009 contract when they, when we came to an In fact, in April, they did affirm the 2009 contract when they, when we came to an agreement with the MOU. So everything was a done deal. Everyone was on the 2009 contract at that point. They came back three days later and rescinded that and decided that, no, they wanted to do the 2022. So we've been in a back and forth with them since April, trying to get everyone on, again, on the 2022 or to ask Ridgeland, okay, we have pushback, can you please just do the 2009? We even offered them their own standalone contract outside of that and have not been able to make any headway. So really, if they don't approve the, their standalone contract tomorrow night on their agenda, then we have some decisions to make and we will have, my board has already, you know, laid out a plan about what to do about that, what, what legally or, you know, our obligations are at that point.
Let me ask you this, why didn't you do that on the 2022 contract? Why didn't you just make the decision saying whoever didn't sign the 2022 contract, that they're out? Why, why wouldn't you take that same approach that you're taking?
Because again, everyone was on the 2009 and unless everyone signs the, the way it's written now, then the 2009 was still, was still being enforced by everybody else. In fact, we were told, our understanding was that the county was not going to sign the 2022 until everybody else had signed. And then, then we were told that, that they had, that, we did not know that.
But my question is very clear because I, I don't want to get in the same situation we in. My question here is, y'all were in agreement?
Well, because the issue is really with the city of Ridgeland.
Hold on one second, y'all was in agreement with the 2022 contract? We, city of Canton, Ridgeland signed it. Why don't you take the same approach with the other cities that didn't sign it? As you saying you're going to take the approach with the ones on the single?
Because the, in the 20, the other city is abiding by the 2009 and they are meeting their financial obligations.
Didn't take the approach.
Because they are meeting their financial obligations and they're willing to stay on the 2009 with everybody else. It's, the issue is with, you know, the city of Ridgeland and not meeting their financial obligations and, and with, with several other options being presented to them.
All right.
Got it.
I think we didn't carry that motion.
Ronnie, we carried that?
We ain't voted on it yet.
We didn't vote on it?
Not yet.
Here's what I wrote down.
What you got wrote down?
It's not my motion. I simplified it and said, uh, the Board of Supervisors, Task Attorney Bob Sanders of the Madison County, of the Library Commission and Board Attorney Mike Espy to collaborate on standalone contracts for the Madison County Library System.
Mike, is that good enough or do you need a little bit more?
I think the way to really do it is for, the lawyers, for all the participants to, to meet. That might be inherent in what you're saying. But Bob and I can't do it alone, it's got to be Ridgeland, Madison, Flora.
To collaborate with the cities, with, with all the, with all of the entities?
We, I mean, is that?
Yeah, I'll, I'll change the motion to that.
Collaborate with all of the entities, is that a good way to word it?
Attorneys.
All the attorneys for the, for the affected entities?
Yeah.
Library system participants.
Yeah.
I'll change the motion to that.
You change your second call?
Yeah, I'd be glad to.
All right, we got a motion in second now. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Where was that under? That was the concern citizen, we ain't left no further. Any more concerned citizens?
No, Ms. President.
All right. All right, now schedule Norman Tax Assessor.
Good morning.
Morning.
We need to enter a public hearing if.
Is there a motion for the public hearing? Motion by Carl?
Carl and Sheila.
Second by Sheila. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carried.
Right, I'm, I'm pleased to inform the board that we did not receive any formal appeals for the 2022 tax roll. So at this time, I ask that you close the public hearing. And we should not have anyone here to, to speak on, on any issues with, with the tax roll today. And I did pass out a packet earlier, you should have before you, with the recommendations of, of my office for equalization changes. And I do ask that you, when the motion is made, if, if you make the motion and approve everything today, that you include that in it. But if you would close the public hearing, I just asked for a motion.
Do you want to close?
I can remove the close public here.
All right. Got a motion by Gerald, second by Carl. Close the public here. You didn't get in any time, Sheila. All in favor? All opposed, motion carried.
First, then I do have a motion that, that he was, and I'm going to just read it.
We'll give you the second on this one.
All right, I'll second it.
I'm going, I'm going to go ahead and read it. It said, accept the tax assessor's recommendation for the forward, forward mentioned parcels found in the miscellaneous appendix to these minutes. Acknowledge and amend the preliminary 2022 homestead application equalization. Acknowledge the dealings to the primary 2022 homestead application. Acknowledge to affirm the set, the value set forth by the tax assessor in the preliminary 2022 real property decreases equalization. Acknowledge and affirm the value set forth by the tax assessor in the preliminary 2022 real property increases equalization. Agreed by taxpayers. Acknowledge and affirm the value set forth by the tax assessor in the preliminary 2022 personal property decrease, decrease equalization. Acknowledge and affirm the value set forth by the tax assessor in the preliminary 2022 personal property increase equalization agreed by taxpayer. And it has adopt and enter the order required by the Mississippi Code, 2735105 and by the Department of Revenue. That's the motion.
And include the, yeah.
And also include the package of the amended homestead equalization 2022.
Well, there's more than just homestead in there, it covers the real and personal property increases and decreases as well.
Okay. With that, as well in my motion.
All right, motion by Gerald, second by Sheila. Any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Motion carried.
All right, the second item I have on the agenda does not require a public hearing today. This is an annual application for certification with the Department of Revenue to, to get, get the authority to expend the one mill according to section 2739329B, Mississippi Code of 1972 as amended. It's something that we file annually showing that we have a plan in place. And just ask that you approve that today.
Move? Motion by Carl?
Second.
Sheila waiting on you.
I'm sorry. Sheila, second?
It's all right, no, I will.
She got a question.
Remind me where the mill goes? Remind me where this mill goes?
Greg, would you like to answer that question on the one mill?
Generally, it goes to reimburse the general fund for expenses associated with the tax assessor's office.
Okay, general fund to tax, tax.
And what is, what's, what's the amount of the one mill now, do you know?
I think in the upcoming year, it's about 1.7, but I'm, I'm not.
1.7?
It depends on which all property is impacted. 1.9, 1.7, 1.5, it's, it's in that range.
Okay.
All right, motion by Carl, second by Sheila, because she say I have my back turned to her.
It's true.
That I don't hear her when she second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you, y'all have a good day.
Thank you.
Right.
Have a good day, Mr. County.
All right, next is consent items. Is there a motion?
Move to approve all consent items.
Prove.
Motion by Carl, second by Sheila. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried. All right, moving straight along. And our business item, New Jerusalem Church of God in Christ.
There it is right there.
Come on up, Rep, and tell us what you got for us.
Good morning.
Morning, everybody.
I am Johnny Anderson, I am the pastor of the New Jerusalem Church of God in Christ. And we're here asking for tax exempt status for some new property that we purchased on last year to add to our existing property. And that's it.
All right, Mike, have you had any?
Yes, they, they filled out the document and they, they qualify. There's one, one thing I couldn't understand, I'm not, I'm not objecting to it. But this was written, it's hard for me to read. And it said that you're, you intend to build a fellowship hall. You intend to build a community development center, so you intend to build it, so it's not built yet.
No.
So you're not asked for an exemption for that, you just want the land.
Just the land accepted as tax exempt status.
This, this lot is right next to the church or?
Yes, it's right behind the church.
Right, but the piece behind it, that's why.
Well, the duplex was and we removed the duplex.
Yeah.
To, because it was a hazard, so.
Okay. I have a motion by Carl?
Second by, I first, yeah, I make the motion. I'll make the motion.
All in favor? All opposed? All right, Rep?
You got it.
Thank you.
Take care. All right, moving right along. Greater Love Worship Center. There she is.
Good morning.
How you doing? Tell us who you are.
My name is.
Your name ain't on here.
Frida Day, Frida Day.
Okay.
And I am the co-founder and sometimes I clean the bathrooms too, Greater Love Worship Center, along with my husband. And I'm here to request tax exempt status for some property that we acquired about two years ago now. It's a parsonage at 1991 Highway 16 East.
You knew about this from what?
Yes, they also filled out the document and the positives are eligible, so.
All right, I make that motion.
I'll second that motion.
And a motion of itself, second by Carl, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you very much.
All right.
All right, moving right along. Heath Hall.
Good morning, board, Mr. President. I'm going to pass out these, these documents here.
Thank you.
All right. All right, thank you.
Once again, good morning, hope all of you had a, a great weekend. Every year this time, I come in front of you and I provide an update on our social media. Where we were, where we are, and where I believe that we are going. This past year, we have had a significant, a significant year again. This period covers August the 21st through August the 20, the 22nd. So we don't have any data yet for August the 22nd, which is why you'll see there. We have, as you know, back in June of 2020, this board authorized $175 a month as flow-through money to be able to boost posts because our field tests were telling us that the best way to boost posts and, and boost followers was to put money behind that. So that's what we've been doing. We've had the great pleasure of working with the, with Makita, the Madison County Business League and Foundation Energy, Amazon Waste Management, members of the media, projects such as redistricting the budget, rural broadband, law enforcement, the Canton flea market, roads and bridges, closures, openings, and closures and openings. Now, last year, when I came in front of you, our number was sitting at 4,994. And I literally waited to the very last second, hoping I would cross over 5,000. By the time I got home, I had. But today, that number is 8,063 followers. That's a 61% increase in followers. Followers on Facebook, especially on a government Facebook page, is the gold standard for success. A follower is a person who has chosen to receive updates from, from Madison County Board of Supervisors through their Facebook feed. In August, you had 93,000 people, 93,000 people who saw our Facebook posts. September, 67,000, October, 50,000, November, 35,000, and June, 71,000. And, and, and ongoing. Sixty, almost 67% of, of those people that are listed in this, in this bracket here who saw it per monthly, only saw it one time. They were only counted one time. The, the other 33% of the people, it could have been multiple times because they're not necessarily followers. So I, I look at as, look at it as a, and it's what social media has done to this, done, done, done across the world. I look at it as a, as a, as an office, as a, as a, something like that. When you have 70,000 people a month that will walk through, walk by your restaurant or something of that nature, that's just a lot of people. We've had some, some changes, but all of them are pretty much statistically there. And you can see that by, by gender. There's still 23% male, 76% female. By, by age, you can see it. The, the, the greatest change that we've seen that has made up to 58% of the people is between 35 years old and 64% years old. That went from 58 to, last year, to 61% this year. Statistically speaking, that's about the same. Where we did see a decrease was in the 65 plus. And that number was down, down, it was 10% last time, it was 23%. When we break it down more by county, it's 79% of our Facebook, Facebook followers are from Madison County. 8.6 Rankin, 12.3 Hines, and one is other. We, we have a couple of countries that follow us.
Did you say countries?
Yes, ma'am. Just, I, you know, they just happen to be, you know, I don't know how they.
Some are military people.
It could be military people, yes, sir. Could be military people. Also, the average muscle, monthly cost to boost is $370.02. We only turn in a bill for $175 because that was our agreement. Strategic Marketing Group puts other $200, average, other $200 a month into that. Every, every month, the administrator gets a very detailed page of the date of the post, the name of the post, was it boosted, was it not boosted? How much did we, did we spend on, on boosting it? So it's very, very detailed. You can ask Nassan, she calls me sometimes about it and asks me questions about it. On our, our, our app, we are also seeing, we saw 103% increase in, in our app. Last period, 373, this period, 758. And I talked to the, talked to the, the people who put together our app or helped put together our app. That was a big project of mine and Duane's and Shelton's and about five other people to get that, to get that done. And that's a pretty decent number when you're looking at a government-only app. It's a good quality app. You can, you know, you can do everything on that app that you can do on our website, plus more. You can sit out in that parking lot or sit out in a parking lot in Iowa and watch, and watch this, this board meeting. What we do reserve, however, are sending out push notifications. We will send out push notifications when there has been a road closure or something like that. But we don't send them out just automatically because we want people to know that if they're getting a push notification from Madison County, something's going on. that if they're getting a push notification from Madison County, something's going on. You know, that they, that they should, they should, they should read, or they'll just delete the app. Yes, ma'am?
Can you, um, put out a push notification to a certain area in Madison County? Like, like, can you put it out for Yandell Road?
No, ma'am.
We need something like that, because Yandell Road had a mess last week, and no one could get anywhere. They were all jammed together, and we need to figure out a way to do that, so that we can tell them how they can get out of their traffic jam.
Can you do that?
Um, no, no, sir, it's, it's not, it's, we're not able to do it through.
Break it down that low.
Yes, sir, to break it down that low. But we, I'll, I will call BFAT today, check on that, see if there's a possibility, and if it is, we will do that.
Yandell Road had a, a huge mess.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
Did it have a flood?
I don't know what the heck it was, but they were all mad, and they were all saying, "Call Sheila, call Sheila." And of course, I didn't know what was.
I'm glad they called you.
Yeah.
It, it was flooding.
But.
It was floods, sure.
Was it raining?
Yep.
Was it flood?
Yep.
Did you hear that?
That was everywhere.
It was a flood.
Yes, ma'am.
Where was it coming from?
They had some trees down there at Clark's, that, Clarkdale Road, and.
But, um.
All right, go ahead, Keith.
Also, I, I wanna, I wanna mention that I was reading an article a couple of weeks ago by Tufts University about apps. And it says that by the year twenty-thirty, that every man, woman, and child in America will have eighteen apps on their phone. I'm going to delete some of mine today. That's just too much. But that just shows you how large that industry is growing and becoming more and more and more important. So, um, you know, um, since we're here in, in, in live streaming, and we do have an audience, I, I do wanna make a plug here. The Facebook page is Madison County Mississippi Government. The app is complimentary Madison Supervisors. Easy to download, easy to find, easy, uh, to use. And I'm more than happy to take any, any questions that you may have.
Heath, I don't have a question, I do not have a question, but looking at the followers from five thousand to eight thousand, uh, it's huge, it's good. We just need to continue to work on that and move it on up to ten thousand, twelve, because that's, this is the excellent way of getting our message out, uh, to the public.
Yes, sir, and, and thank you for, 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 um, bring, bringing that up. You know, the, the, we do a quick notes, and, um, after each meeting, as all of you are aware of. And, and really, that sur- that serves as a press release for what was accomplished in each board meeting. So that has also been very helpful. And, um, I'm so very thankful, my company's so very thankful to be, to be working with you. We put the other money behind it, because we feel it's a partnership. Your success is our success, and we're gonna continue to do so. When we get to ten thousand, um, I mean, we're really looking at a percentage of people in Madison County. I mean, that's, that's strong. And only been up, been up a couple, two, three years, that's significant.
And he might have another question.
Yes.
So, like, what happened last week when there was a flood? Does Randy get that report somehow so that he can blast it out, say, saying there's gonna be a flood on Yandell, go the other way, or how, how does that operate?
Normally, normally Albert will contact me and, and let me know.
Come through emergency, man.
Come through Albert.
Yes, ma'am.
Did, did you get the message last week that Yandell flooded and people couldn't get out? Well, how do we make sure he gets the message?
Well, that would be an eternal, an eternal issue amongst, amongst his office, but he does a, but he does a great job.
I know he does.
Of calling me. If it sprinkles outside, he calls me.
Of who gets him the message? I need to know how to get him the message.
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, I think we'll work through that. Greg, can you work with that?
Absolutely.
But Sheila, there is, uh, certain roads that's in my area. I know where it rain, I know they can't pass.
I don't think it's typical on Yandell, but it sure did happen last week, yeah. I don't think it's typical, but I, it happened last week, and it was a hot mess.
Sound like a, a, a deal that the sheriff, Greg, and little Albert can work on, see can we come up with a way to get it spread out through the community.
And I speak to the sheriff very often, and I speak to, to Albert all, all the time. I mean, we're, we're in constant contact.
Obviously, we have a plan, I'm good, as long as you have.
I've got a, a Facebook page and a, and an app that it goes out on, so maybe we can link them, I don't know.
Yeah, we can.
That would be great.
We can.
Good report, uh, Heath.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen of the board.
All right.
Thank you, Heath.
All right, Building and Ground Director, Drew.
Good morning, Mr. President, Board. Buildings and Grounds has one item this morning. We are requesting authorization to re-advertise for construction bids for the Madison County Park Restrooms, and to raise the budget to one million, seven hundred and nine thousand dollars.
Move. Got a motion, my car? I'll second it, end of discussion.
What is to raise the budget to one point seven-nine? What does that, what budget you referring to?
Originally, on the cost estimates when this came through, I believe the board allocated two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars based off pricing at that time. Materials, things like that have skyrocketed to at least forty, fifty percent. We got these bids back, uh, the lowest cost was over, the lowest, uh, single restaurant.
I understand all that, but I'm just saying, you said raise the budget, you talking about our budget that we in the process of working through now?
Uh, no, sir.
What budget you talking about?
The allocated money for these projects.
And that is in the fiscal year twenty twenty-three budget. What we are doing now is simply setting a line so that we can be within ten percent of that line in the event we have to negotiate. I, I don't think it's going to be one point seven.
Yeah, he answered the question, it's in our budget that we.
Absolutely, yes, sir.
Okay, that's what I was asking.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you.
Anything else, Drew?
No, sir. Any questions?
Uh, uh, little Albert, do you mind holding just a second? Uh, you, you got some more?
No, sir, I said any questions, sir.
No, we good, we good. We got, uh, uh, a circuit, a judge over there.
Judge, Senior Chancery Judge.
Jeffrey Judge.
Jesse Chancery.
I'm finna, I'm finna put you in the circuit court.
Chancery Judge.
No, he is not a promoter.
I, I started to say promotion, and I cut it off.
I, I wanted to say thank you very much for the bailiff, uh, which was part of your consent docket.
Okay.
The sheriff probably is not happy with me taking one of his, um, highest and best.
Come on to my phone, Judge, please.
Well, come on, come on over there.
Hey, that's between you and the sheriff.
He didn't say no.
And believe me, that's the way you supposed to do it, get the best one from the department.
Amen. For those of you who have not met Jesse Smith, he is upstairs, serving as the highest and best bailiff on behalf of the Senior Chancery Judge in our court system. I welcome him, he lives down here on Highway sixteen. He has a great, uh, track record and will be available for you should you need anything when I am not available, or I may be in the courtroom, or wherever. His name is Jesse Smith, uh, he has qualifications that are stellar. I'll be talking to the sheriff about sending his qualifications to Donald Russell later on. I missed out talking with you last week, but I believe you had a nice, um, time.
Peaceful week.
A peaceful week, there we go. And again, I wanted to be sure and tell you that Drew has been, where'd he go? He's around here.
Yeah, the elevator issue.
Yes, we have an elevator issue. Drew has been so open to problems, whether it be something in the courtroom, not, the wifi not working for the attorneys, whether the windows are falling out on the front of the building, uh, when the wind blows. But right now, we have elevator issues. I'm certain you use these elevators as much as anyone else does, and they are not working. We just sent a man down some stairs with a broken back. Your chancery clerk had to walk with him to make sure he didn't fall. This is a fundamental problem. Access for persons with limitations or disabilities cannot be ignored anymore. I'm working with Drew about one of our courtrooms. We cannot use one of the courtrooms because it is not accessible for people with wheelchair accessibility, and it is not getting any better, so. Thank you very much, I appreciate your time, thank you, sir.
Thank you, Judge.
Thank you.
All right. Now, little Albert, be ready.
Board President, Board Members, good morning.
Good morning.
Uh, I'm coming to you on behalf of item thirty-four and asking you all to adopt and approve the hazard mitigation plan for twenty twenty-two through twenty twenty-seven.
Move.
Second.
Yeah, yeah.
All right, all right. Yeah, we made a motion.
Carl, Carl voted, Sheila seconded.
Who?
Ready for the vote. Carl voted, and Sheila seconded.
Okay, well, see, Mike was in my good ear.
Excuse me.
See, Sheila be talking about my bad ear over there. All right?
Is that what the problem is?
Need a vote.
Bad ear.
Discussion and a vote.
All right, got a motion, it's second, uh, end of, end of discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you, Albert.
Thank you, Albert. All right.
Good morning.
Time for our engineer.
Uh, last week, on August the fourth, we, uh, the selection committee, which is composed of the county administrator, county engineer, and assistant county engineer, evaluated three proposals for CE and I services for Reunion Two. Using the guidelines established in the advertisement, the group recommended Wagner Engineering to do CE and I services. So we request that the boards, uh, just take that under advisement, and if so, actually, I'll authorize county engineer to begin contract negotiations with that firm.
Tim, explain to everybody what CE and I services are.
Construction, engineering, and inspection. They, they will be our eyes and ears out there the whole time to make sure that the contractor is following the specifications and the plans, and that the project is built according to what they're, what it's supposed to be built to.
When do you expect construction to start?
We have a PS and EN, okay, we have plan specs. Yep, I caught myself. Plan, specs, and engineering estimates, that's a, uh, a packet that you submit to MDOT. We have submitted that on this project as well as Reunion Three. So we are waiting on MDOT on both of these projects to give us authorization to advertise. So as soon as we get that authorization, we will be, uh, requesting authorization from you and going forward.
What's the, what's the estimation on them giving us authorization?
I would hope it'll be before the end of the year.
I thought we would have it advertised by that time.
Well, the, we may have Reunion Three, and we prob- well, we probably will have Reunion Three. Reunion Three Two is going to be a little bit behind. I've, I've got an item on here, and I've got to, uh, ask for in a minute for, for part of that.
Okay. I'll make a motion, what, you need approval or authorization, or?
I need the board to select Wagner Engineering based on the committee's recommendation, and then to authorize me to begin contract negotiations.
Ronnie, that'll be my motion.
Got a motion, my Trey, second, my car. End of the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried, with the next one.
Next item I have is the acceptance of right-of-way and road maintenance for the Madison County Parkway. This is the new road that goes into the Amazon site and the overall mega site. As you, Makita owns it now, where it's county property, but what we're wanting to do is change it in the legal description from county property to county right-of-way, and establish that the board will maintain it as a public road.
Motion.
Motion, my Sheila, second, my Trey. End of discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried.
All right, I've got two additional items that came up last minute that I wanted to get before you for time consideration. These are for Reunion Two. These are, the first one is a large construction notice of intent, submittal to DEQ. It's been submitted, but I need the board president to be able to sign this for the submittal.
Motion, my Sheila, second, my Trey. End of discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried.
Final item I have is a little interesting. It's a, it's a letter saying that we will pay for anything over what the federal government will pay for this project. Currently, we have no fed money in this, but in the case we do in the future, this, this letter needs to be in the files.
Which project?
Reunion Two.
Motion.
I thought there was a four-million-dollar grant that came.
Well, there is, but we're gonna use that, it, that, we're gonna use that for Bozeman, because there is no federal money in it now, and it just keeps it moving faster.
Okay.
What's your motion? I'm sorry, Sheila, what's the motion again?
To authorize the board president to sign this letter to Mississippi DOT to say that we will pay for anything over what the federal government will pay on Reunion Two. And this is just one of those things that needs to be in the file.
And that is just the bridge and the connections from, from Bozeman and the bridge over to Parkway East.
Correct.
Not the ramps.
Not the ramps.
Okay. Who made that motion? Sheila?
I'll second.
Motion, my Sheila's. Trey seconded.
Okay.
Uh, end of discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you.
All right, uh, here. Tim.
Yes, sir.
The flooding and drainage situation, you went over to Magnolia Heights last Friday. Thought you were gonna, uh, bring up something on, on that situation.
I went out there the day that it flooded so bad, and yes, those houses are, they look like little islands sitting out there in the middle of that, there was water everywhere.
Where, where is Magnolia Heights?
Where's that office?
It's off.
Wait a minute, Magnolia, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Um, I was thinking that we were talking about the, the gentleman that came up last time. Magnolia Heights, overall flooding, we, we're in the process of getting easements. We've gotta get with our right-of-way agent. There's twenty easements to get through in there for the main ditch, and then all the side ditches have to be redone too. And we're out there working, but we get called to different places and have to come back.
Uh, take, take this, uh, Tim. I don't know, let's go to you or Greg, Carl hand it to me, pass it to me. By that way it go to.
Carl, where is Magnolia Heights?
Flo, I didn't flow here. Yeah. Uh, Scott, Weeks, zoning director.
Good morning, Mr. President, Board of Supervisors. I have one item, this Eric D. Washington, this is a mobile home in a residential district, medical hardship, two ninety-one Wyden Road, Supervisor District Five, and so he can be in close proximity to his aunt.
All right, uh, I'll make a motion to approve this.
I'll second it.
Uh, got a motion, a second, uh, discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried. All right. All right, thanks, Scott. Eric, you good to go? All right. Moving right along, I hire attorney.
Good morning again, I'm, next time, I'm gonna come to your, your bad ear, right?
Yeah, come to that bad ear.
The one on the right side is your bad ear, right?
When you, when you take away this ear, you took away everything, man.
All right, all right, well, I don't have anything for you to make a decision on today, but I wanted to update you on the broadband situation. We in really good shape. The Comcast, uh, company reviewed, uh, all of our edits to their contract, and they sent them back to us. And I distributed, uh, the comments to Wagner Engineering, our broadband consultant, I read them. And we've had a series of, uh, back-and-forth communication with Comcast, and I think we've come to a point where we can meet in person to, uh, form a contract that I'll bring back before you next meeting. There really weren't a lot of changes, and the changes that were made were in our favor. So at one-thirty on Thursday, the, uh, regional manager for Comcast from Atlanta is gonna be here, along with all the local people, and we're gonna put our heads together, and, uh, I believe we're gonna sign something to present to you on, uh, on next meeting. And here are the principal features. Now, we're talking about northeast Madison County, uh, District Five. And there were gonna be like twenty-nine-hundred homes, and now there's been increased to somewhere around thirty-four-hundred homes connected. Number two, the price came in about nineteen million dollars. You pledged with your ARPA funds, you pledged ten million dollars toward this. You pledged with your ARPA funds, you pledged ten million dollars toward this particular project, but during the course of the contract, we chose Comcast because they pledged four thousand seven... I'm sorry, four million seven hundred thousand dollars toward this project. So, that leaves about fourteen million dollars to reach that ninety million dollar threshold. Well, here's the good news. Comcast agreed to file for a reconnect grant in September. If we can form this contract, then they will go before the USDA Rural Leadership Service and be the sponsor, ISP sponsor, for this project in September. And so, this is really what we were pressing them for, and they agreed to do it. So, you know, there's a lot of broadband money here in the state of Mississippi and in the federal government, so they agreed to go to both of them, to Sally Doty's group and to Trina George's group, and apply for the fourteen million dollars. So, you know, we've met with Trina George. We've met with... Well, I know we've met with Trina George, and the USDA is very supportive of this project. So, of course, I can't guarantee anything, but I feel really good about this project being funded and saving you ten million dollars. So, if we get the fourteen million from federal government, all of the state of Mississippi, coupled with Comcast money, we won't need the ARPA money, and you'll put that ARPA money to other use, I'm sure. Comcast money will come first, so they could put up that four point seven million first, and then we'll wait for the other money to come. Also, they asked for another year. Instead of two years to build out this project, they asked for three years. So, I don't... With all the system delays and inventory delays, I think that's to be expected. And that is really it. There were really other material changes. They're ready to go. They're ready to sign. I think we're ready to sign on Thursday, and hopefully I'll present that to you next meeting, and we can get going on broadband to northeast Madison County. The other broadband program, which would be...
Mike, before you go any further?
Yes.
For the people that are looking at this at home, explain what ISP mean. You doing like engineer?
ISP stands... ISP is Internet Service Provider.
All right.
And we have to do that. Normally, Madison County would apply directly to the federal government for this kind of money, but the state of Mississippi prevents us from doing that because the state laws say that no county or any municipality can operate a broadband internet system. So, we have to go through a company. We have to. And so Comcast is that company, and so they agree to be our ISP provider for these applications. That's not the federal law. If it weren't for the state law, we would've already applied, but we had to wait. So, we're doing that, but I would say it helps us on the way. The board also approved Madison County entering into a compact with Holmes County for the build-out of broadband in northwest Madison County. So, we've met with Holmes County twice, and the last meeting, we were very pleased and privileged to have entertained the Director of the Delta Regional Authority, Dr. Cory Wiggins. He came to the boardroom next door, and we did that because they have federal money toward broadband, and it's not match money. So, we get any federal money for that project, we can apply to them for match, and usually you can't match a federal with the federal, but this... They have an exemption. You can do it. So, they found this project to be highly favored, and so they are working with us to form an approach, and I've already received... They sent to us what they need for us to get started. I got that, sent that to Mr. Iggenbottom, and he's agreed to take on the project along with me to flesh it out and send it to Holmes. I believe that this particular project application to reconnect will be applied through Holmes County because they have some advantages in this environment that we don't have. And so, we agreed to help Holmes County to apply for reconnect money, which would include South Holmes County and northwest Madison County. And everybody's agreed to that, and we'll be doing it. It probably will be January or February before that application is ready to be submitted. And we're gonna ask for technical assistance money, all the money we can from DRA. Ms. Jones, did you?
I'm just thinking. I was trying to place where we're in Holmes County, but it won't be the Durant side. It'll be the other side.
Paul, you might help me now.
The Pickens, Goodman, Part Chula.
Chula, okay. That's where my dad grew up, yeah.
Yeah, all up in that area. That's that south part back towards Madison County.
So, there'll be one contract, Holmes County, which includes northwest Madison County, and I believe we're ready to go. I also want to let you know, DRA has also been helping us. The road that we're talking about out in Makita...
What's DRA?
It's called Delta Regional Authority. It's a federal agency...
I know now.
...that targets seven parts of seven counties from southern Illinois to northern Louisiana. It's got a high poverty index, it's along the Mississippi River on the eastern west side, and there's a federal agency directly targeted to help that area. And the director's Cory Wiggins, who lives in Madison County, and he was our guest last week, and so he's very familiar with this and agreed to help, and we're underway. So, I feel good about it. Last project is watershed, Carl. Sure wish I could say we're ready to go, but you know we have the money. And that project has been contracted for the PIFRA study. There's a contract for the Mississippi State Wildlife Conservation Service, and they're doing it. And with the recent floods in Canton, I was at the home and saw people in boats and having to be rescued from homes, and I sent the video to the leadership of USDA PIFRA, and they got the video and sent it to that company, the people that are doing the study, and told them to move fast. So, all I can say is we're waiting on the study, and we have the twenty-three point five million set aside, and so we're ready to go since we get the approval. There you go. Thank you. Any questions?
I have to make a report.
Good update, Mike. The committee, the broadband, had been putting in a lot of long hours. I just want to thank Wagner New Years, Gerald, Mike, Greg, and myself. Don't think this just happened. It was communication and going out, reaching out, and bringing in partners to get to this point. If we can ever get to sign this contract with Comcast, it gonna be a historical-type thing because we gonna do something in northeast Madison County, gonna affect generation to come. And I just wanna thank the people and the organization that done got us this far, so far. And on the watershed for the city of Canton, only thing I can say, hold on, city of Canton, we going through the red tape. We gonna get there. We got the money, but when you're dealing with federal money, you got to do it their way, and their way is the slow way, but it gonna be the right way. Thank you.
Well, you know, I don't want to confuse anybody. We don't have the money. We've got the allocation approved, and we're gonna be doing a reimbursement system, so it's basically everything that's reimbursable will... Under that scenario, we've got to spend money first, and then they'll reimburse us.
Hey, fellas, let me ask this, because you guys have been around a lot longer than me, but does Canton flood like that every time there's a big rain?
Yes.
Really?
Recently, it's a lot more floods.
Really?
But Canton has always had some flooding issues.
It was terrible.
Especially the southern portion of Canton. Now, I'm starting to see... We starting to see flooding in right here on Mother King, and it's more of a central west side, and it's... So, it's changing a little, so there's a lot of work needs to be done. A lot of work needs to be done, but as I was stating, some people are under the assumption that Canton got the money, or we got the money, or somebody got the money, and we could be solving flooding right now. And this is a process that's gonna take two to three years.
I couldn't believe the water I saw on... Just in pictures, it was unbelievable.
Yeah. It comes when... And of course, that was a pretty big downfall. The... From what I understand, it was like nine inches, and anytime you get nine inches coming down on a township, I don't care where it is, you're gonna have flooding for a period of time. Because that's a lot of rain. But I just didn't want anybody to be confused as to where the money is, who got the money, and what are we doing. I'm glad that our attorney just made the report and update that we're still going through the steps, and the federal government always puts a lot of...
Regulations.
Regulations and steps and hoops to jump through before you can get to the finish line, but we'll get there. And I appreciate the fact that everybody's working in the same vein to try to solve this flooding issue for the people and citizens of Canton.
All right. Great.
All right. In keeping with the theme of flooding, which is a very unfortunate theme to have to keep with, I'd just like to give you a quick update on what happened at the DA's office, and the primary purpose of this is for me to give kudos to your staff. There's nothing to vote on here. I just want to update you on the timeline as far as what happened and how we got to where we are. Currently, the DA's office is operational. They are set up in the Circuit Court Building, primarily in the Law Library and the Grand Jury Room. The Grand Jury Room has all the files. The Law Library has all the outward-facing people. We were able to get them up and running within twenty-four hours of the flooding. That is entirely due to the work of Buildings and Grounds, moving files, the IT Department getting the internet set up, the sheriff sending trustees and the DA and his staff moving files and paperwork, and chairs and desks and computers, and everything that has to be moved to set up in office. During that same twenty-four hours, we were able to see the circuit clerk, the sheriff, the circuit court judges, and the Law Library all getting along and pitching in to make sure that the DA has a place. And it is not an ideal place, but it is a place. They were able to get eight separate convictions last week in the middle of the flood, and that is due entirely to the work of the folks that work for you. As I said, within twenty-four hours, the outward-facing folks were up and running within forty-eight hours, building in grounds. Cornelius' guys from the Road Department, some trustees, were able to get all the furniture to at least somewhere dry. We've got it kind of scattered throughout the county in open places and buildings, and wherever we could find somewhere to stick some furniture, we got some furniture there, or the DA has some furniture there. And again, that was all moved out within forty-eight hours because of the folks that worked for you. I don't know that as a county, we are terribly great at recognizing folks who go above and beyond. I couldn't find many examples of it in the past, but it is something I would like to continue moving forward, and the folks from Buildings and Grounds, Road Department, IT, Sheriff, Circuit Judges, and you know, they all pitched in, and they were all able to make sure that the DA was at least able to operate. So, going forward, we'll try to find a home for them, and I do have one item for executive session, very briefly, very, very, very briefly, if y'all will humor me as it relates to this and economic development. Thank you.
All right. Nasan. Nasan Cuptrol.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
The first item I have for you is number thirty-nine, which is the approval of the budget amendments and the inter fund cash transfers.
Motion.
Motion by Trey, second by Sheila. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried.
The next item's forty, forty-one, and forty-two is approval of the claims docket and two payroll dockets.
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Trey, second by Sheila. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried.
We have item forty-three on the planning and zoning.
Yes, sir. Item forty-three is the planning and zoning commission for their per diem.
Have a motion.
Second.
Have a motion for Mr. Banks, second by Sheila. All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. Paul will be back in while he's... Paul will be back in for the other item.
And the last item is number forty... The last item is number forty-four, which is the approval of the Fleet Corps Claim Docket.
Motion.
Motion by Trey, second by Sheila.
Yes.
All in favor? All opposed? Motion carried.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Ronnie Lott?